Worries, so I have a seven oh two, so I'd like to call this. Meeting of the Wakefield Planning Board for August twelfth twenty twenty five to order. I'll do a roll call attendance, uh Kevin York here, Kristen Weekly. And myself Jim Hogan, so we have three members of the planning board, which constitutes a quorum. So, moving on to item number two, approval of the meeting minutes. So Kevin and Kristen, have you had a chance to review the July eighth twenty twenty five meeting minutes as presented by Susan? Any comments, questions, concerns before uh accepting a motion to adopt as presented? In that case, do I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
So motion by Kevin, second by Kristen, roll call vote Kristen.
Here, or am I supposed to say present?
Yes.
Present, or here, whatever.
So we're we're voting on whether to accept the meeting minutes, so it's a yes or no.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, motion passes three to nothing. And then as it relates to the July fifteenth twenty twenty five meeting minutes. Have uh any objections, questions, concerns prior to accepting a motion to uh accept as presented?
Nope.
Nope.
So do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept.
Do I hear a second, second, sub motion by Kristen, second by Kevin, roll call vote Kevin?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so that uh passes through nothing as well. And then the next thing I'd like to do is I'd like to go a little out of order for an item not anticipated by the chair, but based on the order of the meeting. Um since the last time that we convened, we have a new town planner. So that's very exciting news, so I'd like to open the floor to uh Marissa. Who uh is has started with the town and maybe Aaron, if you want to maybe do a preamble in terms of how the town staff is currently being structured.
Yeah, so good evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. I'll be really quick, so you all know who I am. Um, this is Marissa Menee, she's joined, just started yesterday, so. I tried sending her a calendar invite to this meeting and her email wasn't even set up yet, so she's very new to the game. Um, also, we've done a little bit restructuring uh within the department, just to kind of streamline more things. Uh when it comes to land use across all boards with um, so we now have a land use and development department. Um and I um got a promotion to be Director of Planning and Community Development, so I'll still be doing economic development work and community development. And then being there to assist Marissa, um conservation now falls under that as well. And so we'll be working hopefully um a lot more closer with the conservation, uh zoning board appeals and Marissa is a huge asset to that. And I know you guys worked very closely with Sam, uh but Marissa is now your go-to uh person. Uh and we're just thrilled to have her, um she was at Swamp Scott for about five years. Um doing all the things with land use and planning, so I think you guys will be in really good hands and I will still be here along the way. So um Marissa, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Aaron, um I I'm Marissa, um I'm really excited to be here. Um I, like Aaron said, I spent the last five years in the town of Swamp Scott. Um I started off there as the land use coordinator and then I moved into the land use and development planner role as well. Um, I worked with the planning and zoning boards, the Conservation Commission, and Swamp Scott has a historic district commission, so I worked with them as well. Um, I am from Newton, born and raised, still live here. Uh, so not immediately from the area, but um I am, I'm excited at all the opportunities that I think Wakefield is going to present me with. Um, I am looking forward mostly to, you know, the best. Uh increase in commercial development opportunities that you guys have that um I think Swamp Scott might not have had or might have. Uh maximize its full potential with, so um again, really looking forward to being here, really excited to meet all of you and to get started working with all of you.
Well, absolutely welcome, uh we're we're very excited to have uh the town planner again. And uh I'm sure we're gonna be having lots of conversations about all the different efforts that are on in-flight for the town, but welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, so looks like uh note that other uh board member Theonel has also joined the call. And uh with that, I'll be moving on to item number three, bylaw review committee. So uh to tee up the for for this one, so I know we've been going through the recodification process for the zoning bylaws with Attorney Bobrowski. As a consultant to the bylaw review committee as chaired by uh Dan Lieber. And um they have uh asked to come in front of the planning board to give us an update as it relates to where the process stands. And any additional feedback they need from the board. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chair Lieber to uh tee up uh any materials that you want to present.
Thank you, thank you very much, Chair Hogan, mu- much appreciated. First, Marissa, welcome to the community, ho- I hope that you have a truly enjoyable uh time. During your career in Wakefield, it's a truly amazing community place to uh live and work and enjoy. Amongst the things that I will tell you upfront, as you're getting used to now on your second day. We're a little bit unique in that we have a ton of contributions and we have a lot of involvement by citizens. So it's not just the elected members of the planning board here who each went ahead and. You know, went through the election process and did some amazing things to do that, which is great. But in addition to to that, and you know, we also have the appointed zoning board of appeals. We have a lot of different volunteers, there's a few hundred volunteers who actually help run the town. It's quite remarkable in a beautiful way, so you'll have the opportunity to get a lot of different inputs. And the fact that on this board meeting. On your second day, you're seeing two boards collaborate is just kind of a a little uh inkling of that. So the bylaw review is something that by background is part of our charter every five. Every five years, we have a bylaw review that's mandated. For the first time since the charter was adopted about thirty years ago, we're actually doing a really a full recodification of the zoning bylaws. The zoning bylaws are uh messy, is a polite way of putting it, and they're confusing. And they're confounding, and so the idea behind this process of recodification is really to clean them up. To make it so that we're not fundamentally changing any of the districts of what they're about or any maps, anything along those lines. But what the recodification for your benefit and every and the community's benefit. Is to understand what the the zoning is intended for. What people can do in their properties and what they can't do on their properties. So they uh have a clean understanding and the process by which they can get exceptions. Because exceptions can and on a regular basis are given by the appropriate boards. We have three adjudicatory boards that now all have overlapping, somewhat overlapping areas. But they they work in concert with one another, so the planning board, the zoning board of appeals and the town council. For different areas and the town is is has gone through this process over the last few years. In the recodification to try to identify, should we really segregate those elements out? And the answer was determined in Wakefield at least, no, to let some of that be determined on the fly. Which it is, in some cases is determined by the way an owner wants to take a particular parcel or project. They ca- they have in some ways the determination of where which board will hear at least initially different elements. So it's it's a neat process that we've been undergoing, we're still open for feedback. Draft number nine was prepared by Attorney Bobrowski, who's special counsel for this purpose. He literally has written the book in Massachusetts zoning, so he he's and has done lots and lots of cases and. Yeah, understands zoning as well, if not better than anyone else in the state, just as in a judge to make the final decisions. He makes final recommendations, it's not final decisions, and is that a fair fair characterization, Attorney Bobrowski?
It is, although I wish the legislature would stop making changes as we're headed to print here.
We can hope that, but they they continue to do to do their thing. And we are open for additional changes to draft nine. Draft ten is anticipated to be ready in a few weeks, I know the Attorney McGrail, who has been very generous with his input is. Is going to send some additional feedback to Attorney Bobrowski on some relatively minor things to. To really clean up the language a little bit more and make sure that some inconsistencies that are found are considered appropriately. But if there's additional feedback from anyone in the community, we really wanna hear it. Our intent for from the bylaw review committee is to present the recodification at the November town meeting. The date of which has not been set, it'll probably be somewhere around November tenth. Between November tenth and November eight eighteen, somewhere in there is when I anticipated it will start. And but again, the town council will call that appropriately, but we wanna make sure that that doesn't come as a surprise to the town overall. So the di- input from all of the boards is appreciated as well as anyone else that wants to give input. So Attorney Bobrowski, if you wanna highlight any of the specific changes, elements, latest things that have been going on. That's really the administrative form of the update, and welcome back.
Thank you, Dan, um good evening, everybody, uh Dan's referring to my recent African safari, so. Um, I highly recommend it if you have the time and the money, it was once in a lifetime experience. Um, I think that with regard to the draft that uh has been circulated as draft nine. There's probably three issues that jump out at me, one is the recent enactment by town meeting of the uh accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Which uh along with the floodplain overlay district is currently sitting on the desk at the AG's office. I didn't see anything remarkable about the floodplain provision, and I would expect it would sail through with no comments. Uh the ADU piece may inspire some AG responses. I put them in separate files and I haven't put them in, they're recodified, but I haven't put them into the main bylaw yet. Because I'm just holding my breath, waiting for the AG's uh reaction. The definitions are in section eleven of the current draft nine. Uh and each of those two sections has independent definitions. The third uh issue would be the sign overlay district, which. Uh yeah, Wakefield has a unique way of doing business here, there is a sign overlay district which affects. I'm sure important pieces of property, but a relatively small area or areas of town. The rest of the town operates under a general section, section six point two uh with regard to signs. They're not at all alike, if you are in a sign overlay district, you've got tougher requirements you have to meet, and that's for a good reason. The rest of the town is certainly being well regulated, but it isn't up to the same stringent standard. And we've been wrestling this now for for a year and a half, uh what do we do? That you cannot just fold one into the other, and if you did, what would you do? If if is the rest of the town to move up to the standards in the sign overlay district? Or is the sign overlay district to be watered down to the standards that are applied in the rest of town?
Attorney Bobrowski, may I, may I just pause you there for a second, so um it's actually on our agenda, it's item number six, the signage overlay district update. Um however, the planning board, as well as the ZBA, both chairs met. Were related to the signage overlay district and contingent on the conversation later on with this board. The proposal from Chair Chair was that for the purposes of the recodification. That the overlay district would remain intact as currently constituted on the basis that there's probably a whole separate. Thoughtful process that needs to on, you know, to to go on with that. With that being said, there was, as currently constituted, there's an appointment by the town council of a design review board. And there was interest from expressed from the Chair of the ZBA, and this is new information for my fellow planning board members. But there was interest from the planning, from the ZBA of having the DRB were continued to be in existence. But to actually provide a mechanism for it to be reconstituted, as it has not sat for some time due to lack of appointments. So there's a, there's a further conversation that I anticipate that this board will have tonight. And hopefully we will gain consensus on trying to provide some guidance as it relates to what the planning board would advocate to do. As it relates to how to reconstitute that that board, um specifically, um and again, this is based on. A preliminary conversation between myself and the Chair of the ZBA, but basically having a mechanism where those three, the three potential seats. Which is consistent with what the board has been in the past, but they would be filled via specific mechanisms, whether that be a zoning board of appeals. Planning board member or economic development member or appointed by the town administrator. And so that's, that's the the consensus that I'm I'm looking to get from the planning board members. Um as part of this meeting and then provide guidance to what we would advocate for as part of the recodification effort. And assuming Chair Lieber agrees, I think that would make a lot of sense in order to to get this into the recodification for this fall. Town meeting, which I'm assuming is your continued target, such that um that could be reconstituted. And then we could take the 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 deeper dive changes with that recodification or the um the bylaw for the signage at a later date.
Thanks for that update, um the current version of the sign overlay district is section nine point four of draft nine. And I did exactly what you described, I did not change anything, I just reformatted it. In order to go along with the numbering system in the recodified bylaw, so that's, that's, that mission has already pretty much been accomplished. So I invite you all to take a look at section nine point four. And I I think that's a fair summary of where we're at, I mean, obviously some things have been changed. Uh the section on non-conformities, for example, has been modernized, given twenty-five years of recent case law. Um and there are other provisions, I I particularly like your creative overlay district. Uh which I would usually call planned development district, I think it has a wealth of opportunities built into it already and I. I I think if anything, I would emphasize its value in terms of going forward into the next twenty-five years of Wakefield build out. That's about where I I'd stop. Of course, I'm available uh to the planning board, anytime you have a question uh and wanna send me an email, just please go ahead and do so. And finally, uh with regard to Brian McGrail, I'm anxious to get his comments, I I look forward to getting those. Uh so that I can fold them into the next uh draft.
So thank you for that update, uh other members of the planning board, does anyone have any specific comments, questions, or concerns that they'd like to express as it relates to the recodification effort?
So so one other thing I just wanna 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 throw out there is what Attorney Bobrowski was referencing. In the ability for the planning board to use his expertise is something that I encourage the planning board to consider doing. In addition to Attorney Mullen, who's absolutely fantastic as general town council, they work well together. Attorney Bobrowski's focus on the land use in particular can be useful. And was contemplated and approved in the contract that he has with the town. So there is the time and the pre-allocated and pre-approved funds. Available for him to spend some time doing those other projects for the town itself. And so it it's something that is not outside of the realm of what is already available to us. So as long as it's, you know, the the questions and things are that are available. It the, we do have the the vehicle in use for that, so we do have the ability to use his expertise, and I just wanna wanna mention that. Cause having the ability to do that is really helpful, and we've made improvements, things that the. Will be substant- substantive to the town for things like economic development. The ability to have new uses that weren't really contemplated twenty twenty-five years ago. Uh some of the the different definitions and new types of uses. And an example, one that I think could be fun, if a business wanted to do it. Is we now have the ability to have a local brewery and or a local distillery. So those are things that would be added as acceptable uses in the town itself, and they're designed to improve the community. And do it in a responsible way, so those are just some of the different pieces. And we've gotten some of those those elements from Attorney Bobrowski, so I just wanna throw that out there.
And can you remind the the rest of the board, what is the anticipated timeline between now and the completion of the recodification process?
So the co- the complete, the final completion will will hopefully be upon approval by the Attorney General after an approval vote. At the fall town meeting, between now and the fall town meeting. The intent is to go through the next update, which will be update number ten. That will hopefully be ready in in a few weeks, we're waiting on just a few different components. Including if there's additional feedback and update uh updates on any of the signage districts, either the primary sign bylaw. Or the signage overlay overlay district bylaw, if there's any language in there that is recommended for change. We can submit those elements into the next version, otherwise the idea is that we will will likely be submitting. Or expecting to to take a vote and submit an article to the November town meeting to replace the. Existing chapter one ninety in its entirety with all of the sections of the recodified bylaw. And that way it'll be a short article in and of itself, but it will accomplish the goal of replacing the entirety of the existing bylaw. With a recodified version. It is designed to stay away from some of the more controversial issues, such as the MBTA district is being kept. Exactly as it was, other than the renumbering, is uh exactly as it was approved, provided that it's not changed by the Attorney General. That's part of the reason why it's a separate physical file in the upload, but.
Between now and art or you know, item ten or revision ten rather. When would you need comments in order to help bake that into that? And then after that revision ten, what is the process between then and then having it getting onto the town warrant?
So I would like to have all comments to Attorney Bobrowski and for the. Uh ideally to the bylaw review by the end of this month. So about two weeks to to try and get comments, that's not the end of the process, that would be to get into revision ten. And if or consideration for revision ten. And Attorney Bobrowski will determine which elements need to be discussed in revision ten, because revision ten is not a final version. At that point, it will go before the bylaw review, we're still determining when that meeting will happen, it'll be sometime in early September. Bylaw review is anticipated to take a vote on a warrant article. Which will have the substitute, which will be a replacement of the sections of the bylaw. The details, which is all of the language, the hundred, a hundred plus pages of language in the bylaw itself. Will be available, continue to be available online, those will then be presented to the town council. And then referred to the planning board as well. So they'll come back before a public hearing before the planning board, where additional feedback can be can be taken. And then incorporated as necessary into the final language. That then will go before the the before the town meeting itself.
So Dan, um just from a from a timing perspective, the intent is to have all comments in by the the twenty-ninth, call it. Um which is the Fri- the Friday, Friday uh two weeks from this Friday. And then you would have a draft. Rev ten by sometime in like that September twelfth-ish range, and then the intent would be to go to town council. On like nine twenty-two and then we would um and then we would, that would get referred to us on the twenty-third, and then that would allow us to schedule. Our public hearing sometime in October.
Yes, I think that.
That that's that's correct.
Yeah. And I'll just um. Uh as I'm getting close to retirement, I'm traveling more. So I know that on the twenty-fifth of October, I'm headed out of town. Um and so if we could do it in October at the planning board before that date, that would, I can I can always zoom in, but I'm not sure whether you're hybrid, so.
Well, if that's the case, then I would anticipate we have a regularly scheduled planning board meeting on October fourteenth and twenty-eighth. Which would be what I would propose, at least as a placeholder for my own board management perspective, to have in and pencil. In order to uh make sure that we're holding two public hearing dates, um that would be viable.
Well, right now, the fourteenth is open and I can put that in as a live appearance, the twenty-eighth I will be out of town and I can zoom in if that's acceptable to the board.
Uh I, in general, we we've been finding is that we've been trying to do one in-person and one live. As it relates to public hearings for zoning amendments, so if that's, if that's um. So let's, let's at least put that in pencil for my own planning purposes for now, and then if that's acceptable to the bylaw review committee. Um hopefully that will facilitate a successful um inclusion onto the warrant.
Great.
Just um just a process question, um so town council votes uh. To send it to the planning board on the twenty-second of September, that means they're putting, they're putting it in the warrant. Um and that meets the publishing deadline, right? Cause the. Right, town council's gotta prove it at least a month before the warrant. Or before town meeting, right?
I'm not sure of those dates, but it sounds pretty familiar from many other towns I've worked.
Sounds right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we can have hearings, but right, they'll like, um okay.
I believe the the warrant typically closes a month prior, and if the.
Yeah.
Town meeting is typically in early to mid-November. So if that's the case, then if we're getting in September, that should provide sufficient buffer.
Yeah, yeah, so got it. Um, uh, any, any guidance on like uh ways to um hold these? Like key topics for the October fourteenth and October twenty-eighth in terms of walking people through? The the bylaw?
My general approach, subject to the board's approval, would be to walk people through section by section. With any uh questions raised in that section being held like some an item at at in the budget discussion at town meeting.
Similar to what we did at the, when it was the joint meeting between the planning board and the bylaw review.
Yeah, okay.
And I I would say just off the cuff that about sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the bylaw is the old bylaw, it's just renumbered.
Yeah, right.
And obviously the thirty, thirty-five percent that got changed is gonna be a focus.
And I think the other thing I would ask is if there's a, for lack of a better term, a cheat sheet of relevant things that change, not in terms of. Numbering and sequence, but in terms of content, for example, the addition of a brewery as a as an accepted use. Um that I think would be something that'd be helpful to guide that public review process, given the fact that there's so, there's so such a. Volume of changes that trying to digest it as someone who hasn't been following along in the process, I think is, it can can become overwhelming for sure.
I I usually do provide that, I'll keep minor changes in lowercase and major changes in caps. And then I'll walk through that as we go through the public hearing. And I I like to keep it short rather than six pages, which tends to bowl people over, I I like one piece of paper, two sides, so. I can use a smaller font if I need to.
Uh so a- any other members of the board have any other questions or or anything that they would like to bring up at this time?
Not directly pertaining to the recodification, but Attorney Bobrowski, the creative overlay district. How unique is that in your experience, how how many other towns and cities in Massachusetts have something like that?
Well, if you uh call it the planned development district, then it's it's getting more common. I just recently recodified Medford and put it in, and I did Haverhill a few years ago and put it in. The origins of it come from Lexington and Burlington, in my experience. I'm I'm sure we all know Hartwell Avenue from our tr- travels down one twenty-eight southbound. All of those buildings, for the most part, are independent planned development districts, they're not in an industrial district, they're in planned development district one. Planned development district two, the proponents came to town meeting and said, this is what I wanna do on my property, it's not in the book. Help me out here, this is a great idea, it's great for taxes, it's great for jobs, and it's not gonna hurt anybody. And I I think Burlington's been a real example in terms of the rebuild of the mall area, that whole district is a planned development. And I, I think Burlington's been a real example in terms of the rebuild of the mall area. That whole district is a planned development district that, uh, Reamer and Bronstein, a, a local law firm in Burlington, did a, did a lot of that work. So I think it's, it's, it's just a really good way to think about it. My favorite uh, creative or planned development district is the intergenerational campus on a hill in Dedham that overlooks the Charles. On the top of the hill, ninety acres of land is the Rashi School, Keta Eight, the, uh, there's a assisted living facility. There's a long-term care facility. There's a childcare center and there's one other use that I'm forgetting. And who has that in their book, right? But what a great idea. Now, I think ninety percent of it is open space. Uh, it was voted by the Dedham voters maybe ten years ago, twelve years ago.
Knowing that there's, um, currently a, uh, potential marketing initiative in the future that Aaron will lead. I, I was wondering if that's an area that Wakefield should consider, and I'm curious of your opinion. Um, including that in marketing materials for pursuing new businesses.
Definitely. Uh, you know, it has a lot in common with other things that have happened statewide, forty R, for example. Which I, I've seen promos for this in North Attleboro and Grafton where they're, you still, um, adopted districts that have not been utilized. Um, but it's the same idea. If you're, if you're doing a forty R, that's not in the book. You come in, you say, I want to do two hundred and fifty units at the train station. This is what it's going to look like. And it's adopted pursuant to a different statute, but barely different. And of course, the state has incentives for towns who do it to pick up some money on the way out.
Thanks. Any other members of the board? Seeing none, the, uh, I think one I would like to, to thank Dan and Mark for, for leading this effort for a longer time than I anticipated when you guys first started, but you guys have been doing a great job and it looks like, you know, from looking at the zoning and where it was, I think it's much better organized and logical, easy to follow. And so I really would applaud you guys to, in, in helping that process. And it looks like a number of the comments that we had when we had that meeting some time ago, joint between the zoning board. Or sorry, between the bylaw recodification committee and the planning board. It looks like they really got in and, and looks like it's been really well done and thoughtful. So I do want to just say thank you so much for it and, um, I'm looking forward to, uh, to seeing it come before us in our, in the the formal public hearing process and, uh, and definitely intend to, to be supporting it wholeheartedly. I'm sure other members of the board will as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I also want to acknowledge the Joe who is joining us here also wears two hats with the ZBA and Kevin who gets to wear both hats tonight as he is on both planning board and the bylaw review. And the other members who've been a part of the process over the years. So there's six who've been through the entire process and there were four additional who had been a part of the process over time. So it, it's a labor of love by a lot of people. It gets to the way that I made my opening comments. We're a community that thrives based upon volunteers and involvement and that's really what this shows. And Jim, what you were saying is correct that the comments that have been received over time by bylaw review, both including it the joint meetings with the planning board and other meetings, they really are taken to heart. The, the goal of this is to make something that meets the community's needs for a very long time. And I'm quite confident we're coming out with a fantastic product. And we will again, look for support and look for additional feedback at public hearing. So thank you very much for your time. Much appreciated and much thanks also to Kevin and Joseph for joining us.
Absolutely. Um, anyone have any objection if I, if I propose on closing item number three of the bylaw review committee update? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much for the time and I'm going to be moving over to item number four. One fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision. So to provide the board with an update in email correspondence between myself and Attorney McGrail who's joining us. Um, he indicated that the applicant would not be ready to present an, uh, a meaningful update at this meeting. And so he requested the, the public hearing that was continued to this meeting, uh, be extended. Uh, and the request it was to reschedule to September, our September ninth regularly scheduled meeting. So, um, I, I'd like to, to open up to members of the board. If you were, are amenable to that or have any objections, please let me know. And, uh, we can discuss. Otherwise, I would propose on taking a vote to, uh, continue the public hearing to the nine-nine twenty-twenty-five planning board meeting.
No issues for me.
Okay, I'll note that it looks like we lost, uh, Mr. Noel. Um, so it looks like we're down to three members. So, um, the, in that case, uh, do I hear a motion to move or to continue the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision public hearing to the regularly scheduled nine-nine twenty-twenty-five planning board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Kevin, seconded by Kristen, uh, Kristen?
Second, or yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well. So motion passes. We've continued it to the nine-nine twenty-twenty-five meeting. The other thing I'd like to, um, to mention is that, uh, we received a letter from Attorney McGrail with that request for the continuance as well as a request to extend the, um, the date at which we have to make a decision to twelve thirty-one twenty-twenty-five. I think at this time the, we've got an e- extension through, I want to say it was August thirty-first. So if, uh, no members, the other members of the planning board have an objection to that, um, I'd like to issue a letter, uh, confirming that extension of time to twelve thirty-one twenty-twenty-five.
Sounds great.
And I believe this also requires a motion. So do I hear a motion to request an extension of time for the one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street subdivision, uh, planning board decision to twelve thirty-one twenty-twenty-five?
So moved.
Alright, second.
Okay, so I've got motion by Kevin. I've got seconded by Theo. I would note that we have four members of the planning board as Mr. Noel has rejoined us. Uh, so roll call vote, Kristen?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Noel?
Uh, my apologies, uh, uh, yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, in that case, uh, I think, uh, so I will formally issue a request uh, to, uh, extend to twelve thirty-one twenty-twenty-five, which the applicant has already indicated they are willing to accept as well as a continuance to nine-nine twenty-twenty-five for our next regularly scheduled, uh, planning board meeting that will have this as a public hearing. Anyone else have any questions or concerns or comments, or I want to ask Attorney McGrail anything before we potentially move on? Okay, and then Attorney McGrail, I, I'd be remiss if I don't give you an opportunity. Is there anything that you'd like to, to provide as an up, by way of update prior to the continuance of this meeting?
It's a rare occasion, Mr. Chair. I have nothing to say.
Okay, sound good. Thank you. Okay, so in that case, item number four, I will close and I'll move on to item number five. Housing trust, uh, planning board representative. So I see some email correspondence from, uh, Sherry. And I, I believe she may be incorrect. Theo, you're not our representative to the housing trust right now. That was Mr. Lowery, correct?
Uh, but I, um, I do think, uh, we have to reappoint, um, since it's a new term, right?
Correct. So that, so that's the, the, so, cause you're, or did you take over temporarily because Matt? Matt, um, is no longer a member of the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, that's right. So the, your term ends October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. So starting November first, we need a new, um, new or continued representation on the housing trust representative slot. So Theo, do you maybe want to give other members of the board a update as it relates to what's been going on with the housing trust before we, uh, decide on who will be acts our representative on a go-forward basis?
Yeah, really, really happy to do so. Um, so, uh, what's, what's really, uh, exciting is that we did approve the housing production plan. Um, which is, uh, maybe Aaron, uh, can, uh, give us an update. Uh, is still waiting for final, uh, green light, uh, from the, uh, executive office of housing eligible communities. Um, but, uh, the, the plan itself really has, is a great roadmap. Uh, with twenty-six different action items, uh, that the, the town can take and, uh, the, the housing trust is really, uh, in a great position to uh, help lead, lead the way on a number of these in conjunction with uh, other boards and departments in town. And I think, uh, um, has a really neat opportunity to play a, a good role in, uh, leading some discussions and, uh, and then along with the planning board, board. I think, uh, really helping to cede the ground to, to implement these. Um, the, uh, the housing trust also, uh, has a small, uh, trust fund of monies that they manage. Uh, something that I think is under, or still, uh, being discussed is well, it's certainly how to use that money. It might be to, um, uh, create a small down payment assistance program. Uh, um, it could also be, um, it's currently being used for some rental assistance, right, Aaron? But I, yeah.
For the, um, renter, yeah, rental assistance program, which has been very popular.
Yeah, um, the, uh, it, it meets basically quarterly, um, there, thereabouts. Um, the, uh, I will say, uh, the current chair, Gail Severt, um, is, uh, interested in working with, uh, Town Council and others to really, uh, figure out some ways of taking action, um, on some items, uh, but not, um, and really looking, uh, for, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, sort of be, being very open to how, uh, you know, the, that, that idea generation could, can be, uh, coalesced and formed. So Marissa, this is a really neat opportunity for you, um, and, uh, for the planning board, um. And, uh, yeah, all I can say is we should have more representation than just one person. Uh, so, um, yeah, uh, but, uh, but.
As you say, thank you for that rundown. Um, so I think the, the first question, uh, of course, with all these boards is you're the person who's currently acting as the planning board representative. Is that a role that you, you wish to continue? Or would you like to open it up to others to potentially put their hat in the ring as it relates to representing the board?
Um, I, uh, I always want to share because I really don't want to, um, hog opportunities because um, uh, I think, uh, also I, I think there's a lot of different ways that, that we can really, uh, take action on the, the housing production plan. So, um, yeah, um, I, uh, I really, uh, I really do want to share. So um, I'd, I'd love to do it, but I, but I do, but I, I do also want to defer to others too.
In that case, Kristen or Kevin, do either of you have an interest in representing the, the planning board on the housing trust?
I would be interested, but since I'm also serving as vice chair, I would defer to Kristen. Um, Kristen, if you would want to do it.
Um, I would be willing to do something like that when I'm no longer PTO president. Uh, but while I'm still PTO president at the Greenwood, I'm all set.
Alright.
So ask me in like June.
Alright, alright, alright.
That's absolutely fair. Thank you for, 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 for saying no in order to respect your yeses.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. That's well said. That's well said.
Uh, so in that case, uh, I think I'm hearing Kevin, if you're interested in doing it. Um, and Theo, you're amenable to it, then I would propose on, uh, appointing Kevin as the planning board representative to the housing trust.
Wait, but it sounded like Theo still wanted to do it, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we can do rock, paper, scissors, uh, but, but seriously, um, uh, and I, I, um, I, I think sharing, sharing really is, uh, uh, is really good. I, there, there's a lot that I would still like to to help the planning board take the lead on in terms of the housing production plan. So, um, I don't, I don't think there's anything that would stop that. So, um.
For a second there, I thought you were going to say sharing is caring. You almost.
No, no, no. I, I, no, no, no. I, 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 that, that would, you'd, you'd hang up on me. Yeah, yeah, I'd lose, I'd lose all support whatsoever. Um, so, yeah. Um, no, Kevin, I, I think, I, I think it, it would be a, a really neat, uh, a, a, a really good opportunity. Um, so.
So if that's the case, then I would, uh, I would, you know, uh, Kevin, if you're putting your, your, your hat in the ring, um, then I would second that. And, uh, to, for Kevin to be our, uh, our representative. So, uh, do I hear a motion to nominate Kevin York as the planning board representative on the housing trust?
I will make a motion to nominate Kevin York to be the planning board representative on the housing trust.
Second.
So motion by Theo, seconded by Kristen. Kevin?
I will abstain in true Matt Lowery fashion.
I was wondering if you're going to do that. Uh, Kristen?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And Kristen, for your reference, your, your predecessor, he would never vote for himself for, to be a member of the planning board, to be chair, vice chair, anything. And, uh, his last meeting, he elected to, to say no in terms of closing the meeting for adjournment, just to, just to be, uh, just to be interesting. So, um, but okay, so in that case, uh, Kevin will be a representative and, uh, thank you for for stepping forward and volunteering and, um, we'll, uh, we'll go forward from there and look forward to hearing, uh, exciting updates. It sounds like the trust is doing great things in the community.
Yeah.
So with that, I'll move on. I'll close item number five and proceed to item number six, signage overlay district. So I think the board got a preview of what, um, what this is, the update is, but myself, Tom Lucy, who's the chairman of the zoning board of appeals and Aaron met, uh, recently to discuss the signage overlay district. There, there was a little confusion when we got the latest version where the design review board continued to be a part of the overlay district and we had understood that was, um, there was a desire for that to come out. My understanding after talking to the ZBA is they do want the design review board because signage overlays that review process has become onerous to the ZBA and they would like to have a design review board where that's a more focused discussion point and review. Um, however, they would like it if it's going to be delegated design review board or to actually meet.
Yeah.
If they're asked, I would say. So at this point, what we talked about as a con- concept and if, if the board here agrees, I, I would propose on, on sending an email to, uh, Dan Lieber for the recodification is the proposed next steps would be to amend the language in the overlay district such that the designer review board in lieu of being appointed by the town council would be a representative of the ZBA as, as appointed by the ZBA internally. A representative of the economic develop, economic development council, which is a relatively newly formed group within town. But they would represent the, the interest of the business. And then a, an appointment, uh, to be made by the town administrator with the intent that, of that being a potential town staff member. And those three members would constitute the design review board, review signage and then ultimately provide a recommendation to the zoning board of appeal for their approval, such that if the design review board agreed to something that was, uh, viewed to be out of bounds or excessive, there would be a check on that power. So that's kind of the, the, the proposal for what we would be doing in the immediate term. In the longer term, the, the signage overlay district, uh, there was a, there's a there could be an appetite for some, some reforms. Uh, it's a relatively long bylaw for signage. And so the thought process would be that there'd be a subcommittee of members of the ZBA planning board and potentially that exact economic development who could look at it in a more meaningful way, manner over a process and over a time. So that's, that's, that was the nature of the conversation between myself and the ZBA. So I, I'm more than happy to open up to any questions, concerns or comments from other members of the board to see if, if, if what we talked about seems to make sense.
I, I feel like it makes sense. I really like the idea of having a representative from the economic development council on there. I think that makes a lot of sense.
And the thing that's been nice is that similar to. And the thing that's been nice is that, similar to the housing trusts that we just did, since it's a representative of the board. I I feel very confident it would be populated. I'm not seeing anything, uh Aaron, uh I'd like to to kick it over to you, do you have any other color that you'd like to add or do you think I I was able to? Summarize where where we think we stand?
Yeah, it was a really good meeting, I think we you know, talked through everything and I think you have it covered. I was talking to Marissa, I was kind of filling her in on, you know, um what was going on for tonight's meeting. And it is interesting that we wouldn't have a planning board member, do you, is that something that you guys? Would be interested in, or you think, I can't remember, we talked about that, we probably did and I just forgot, but.
I I think that we 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 didn't really get into the the nitty gritty of it, um I I'm I'm. Fairly amenable either way, candidly.
Okay.
Um but. The other members of the board, if they thought that there would be a strong desire for us to be involved in the design review board process for the signage overlay.
What what was the third uh town staff economic development council rep, what I thought you said planning board rep?
ZBA.
ZBA, okay.
So it'd be a member of the ZBA who would be rep kind of the liaison to the the. The special permit granting authority was the thought process.
Um is it town staff or a town administrator appoint appointee?
Pointed with the thought process, it would be staff.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm listening, that's yeah, okay. Um. I mean, yeah, you you want an odd number, right, so um what what would be the the term? The terms of these appointments?
The thought process was would be it'd be yearly similar to.
Okay, okay.
Other boards.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I didn't mean to rock the boat, but Marissa and I, Marissa brought it up, actually. I don't recall us talking about that, so just if you guys wanted to talk it through.
I was thinking about it too, and I then I thought. If uh cuz you bring up the point about needing an odd number of members and um could the town staff? Um act in an ex officio capacity or just as liaison or non voting member that way?
Yeah, that was the other thing is that you could make it so the town staff member is advisory only in lieu of voting.
That's probably a better move, actually.
Okay.
More advising and and just I think that'd be better.
Yeah, yeah, um.
Kevin, Kristen, do you have, do you is that that's? Do you agree that that would make sense for a member of the planning board, member of the ZBA and a member of the? Economic Development Council, I guess that would it would also have the ad uh advantage of having some some cross ZBA planning board, you know, built in links.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I would agree too. So, yeah, ZBA, planning board, economic development council, and then town administrator ex officio. Their staff person. Alright. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so if that's if that's the consensus, then what I will do is I will, I'll draft an email to uh Attorney Lieber. Uh sorry, Attorney Dan Lieber and um ask him to direct Attorney Bobrowski to draft language to that in uh effect.
I did notice in the draft, um Bobrowski, did you guys read the part about the design review board makeup? At all, in the draft he has now?
I boo, the last time I saw it, it said that it was appointed, three members appointed by town council.
Um yeah, it was three residents, member associate, uh and uh one of whom should be. A member, associate member of the zoning board of the appeal. Um and then they want the people to have the qual other two qualifications, training, experience in the art design professions are qualified by training and experience in architecture. Um but it also talks about appointing, they can if they like alternate members. So I just want to throw that out there too, if there's an absence, since it's the only three member board, I didn't know if that's something too, um. It's highlighted in ten ten point two, I can send the link around to everyone if you want it or. Just something I wanted to throw out there.
How how do um alternative members work?
So they're they are there in case a member, an official member is gone, they have voting rights, um so if they don't have a full whole board.
Got it, okay.
Does that, does any board in town have those besides ZBA?
Um I don't know on the top of my head, um. And sorry, I didn't mean to throw us for a loop, but just something I noticed that he had.
I think my my biggest thing is that I wanna make sure that we have a board that's going to be automatically populated. Such that we don't end in a situation such such as we are now, where we've got appointments that aren't being made for. Significant gaps of time out of significant gaps of time out of time, so I think having the po- mem- members of the board populated by. Other boards that will appoint a member um has a lot of value.
I completely agree.
Yeah, it also puts the responsibility on those people to fulfill the duties of it, so maybe there isn't. As much need for alternates.
Yeah.
I don't know how anyone else feels, I I don't think the qualifications that were in the previous version that Aaron mentioned are needed. I feel like that also kind of whittle down the number of people who could be. Part of it, and I think moving to this new model with board appointments um does away with the need for that.
Especially if there's gonna be town staff supporting the effort, as as my understanding previous, it was the DRB did it with no. There there was no equivalent of Marissa.
Yeah, some some of those are also subjective, like design, I could like a design, you could hate a design.
Yeah. That's something that was is talked about quite a bit.
That that makes that makes good sense too to to nix that.
Okay, so in that case, what I would propose unless um other members of the board have an objection, I will send an email to attorney or to. Dan indicating that we would like to have the the signage district uh as currently constituted. In the recodification process, with the exception of design review board membership shall be edited to. Be representative of a member of the planning board, member of the zoning board of appeals and a member of the. Economic uh Development Council.
That's sounds great.
Okay, uh any other items before I close on number six signage overlay district? Okay.
Oh, I do have one quick question, sorry, um how often, it just meets ad hoc or?
I think in the past it did, yeah, depending on who um the what they got. Board, I think they would try to put some a group of them together and they'd meet.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next item I have is item number seven, items not anticipated by the chair. Um before I open up to other members, I will um first off start by uh asking. Aaron, do we have a line of sight on, I know we have the housing production plan, which is in with the the. ELOC, the the whatever the acronym is. And then there's we also have my understanding, the other kind of planning effort we have uh that's ongoing is the master plan. Where do we stand on on that, I know it's been.
So I've slowly um was trying to keep up with other commitments to um have been going through the document um. And I don't know when the what the last update that Sam provided was, but we did get a revised document um from MIA PC. Um in December and it was a lot cleaner, um more concise. Um but as everyone knows, this has taken a while and so the data is outdated. And so now going through and trying to clean that up and then also just clean up the document in general and then revisit with advisory group, so. I don't have a target date, I kind of got Marissa up to speed on the process yesterday and how we kind of moved that forward. Um that's the I would love to have it done by the end of this year, um but um. Yeah, that's kind of where we're at, um I shared it with Theo, I know Theo offered his assistance in looking at it. Um I just wanted to take a quick look through myself um before kind of opening it up to everyone else, so that's kind of where we're at, but we were short. People and there was just a lot going on these last few years with uh MBTA communities and ADU, so it always just seemed to kind of keep falling down.
Okay, that's that's helpful to understand from our for our planning purposes, uh any other members of the board have items not anticipated?
No.
Okay, seeing none, uh I will go and do my second one, so uh Marissa, obviously, we're very excited to have you on board. Um one of the things I do want to highlight to you, I'm sure Aaron, if she hasn't gotten up to speed with you on this, she will shortly, um so. Master plan we just talked about, housing production plan has been finalized in the recent past. The Vision twenty thirty was probably less than two years old, uh which is another visioning document. Um we just are going through this by law recomplication process, so there's a number of these kind of big picture. Visioning, planning documents that are all kind of wrapping up concurrent with with this recodification process. Um all to be saying, you know, members of the board, including myself, um believe that this is a good time for us to potentially. Start teeing up a process for a comprehensive review of the zoning maps. Um our zoning maps, as as you've probably seen, as you and you start becoming more familiar, they have not been updated in some time. And there are um I'll say logical inconsistencies with how they're drawn. Um in terms, you know, just didn't, I don't think there's been some planning associated with some of those in some time. So there's been some interest, members of the board, based on how many documents we have and. Visioning documents and as well as the litany of. Suggestions from the housing production plan that that there would be something that we'd be interested in doing. That being said, acknowledging that's a major effort, that is uh a a a process. We we had obviously limited success with really having a uh. Engagement in the with the public through our MBTA three A process and then we got. A cavalcade of feed the feedback mostly negative at the end of that process when the the process with the the maps were kind of. Baked, for lack of a better term, so I think we're trying to take a step back, take a deep breath and think about constructing a process that's. Inclusive and engages the public in a manner such that we're not gonna set up for a a major showdown at the end. Um so I wanted to kind of plant a flag, I know I've been talking about this for some time. And I haven't really kind of gotten my head around how that process would like to work, but I do wanna, you know, put that on your radar that. In my mind, I'd like to start thinking about teeing up process that, assuming we can get through to fall town meeting. And maybe the master plan as we get into the new year for twenty twenty six, some somewhere in that timeframe. Um not a today issue, but something that to be aware of, that that's something that we in the board have talked about a a number of times and I believe there's a fair amount of support.
Great. Yeah.
So, and uh with that, um any other, I was not stated by any other members, you know, either Aaron or Marissa?
Um I do not, just as you guys know, the housing production plan uh was sent in the sixteenth, they have an initial review for thirty days. That thirty days is coming up, so I'll be reaching out after that, if there's any changes we have to make, they have ninety days from the date we sent to, so. Um we'll just stay on top of that um as well and keep you guys in the loop.
And what day did it go in, you said?
The sixteenth.
July sixteen.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
So they have thirty days to accept it or to provide comment?
Yeah, if there's any, based on the regulations, it's like if they have anything that's really sticking out to them that you can go back and look at. Um what's the exact language? Um the department shall conduct an initial thirty day completeness review and then will notify the municipality of any deficiency and offer an opportunity to remedy the deficiency, so. Maybe there's no deficiencies, I don't know, so I'll check in with them and then ninety days um. Where did it just go? And um within ninety days after the department's finding that the HPP is complete, the department shall approve the HPP if it meets the requirements specified. So.
So theoretically, directionally, Octoberish, maybe November to get it formally adopted.
That's a hope, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other items from anyone before I move to, oh Theo?
Oh, um eight uh the ADUs, is that uh fully approved by the state?
Uh no, I have not heard back from the AG, um their ninety days are up, I believe that twenty sixth of August. Um so but looking at other communities that have just submitted from town meetings that were like in April, they just. Seem to have gotten their approval letters the last week or two, I'm assuming it'll be coming very soon.
Okay, and um and the MBTA communities, that's still?
That's all set, that's that's an E code, um that was previous town meeting that was approved, we're good there.
And we're the the. Or really the.
Blood plane?
Well, I was gonna say the self storage overlay is all also uh adopted formally and everything as well.
Yes, that should be all updated um as well in E code as well as the maps that are reflected.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have anything else before I move to item number eight, adjournment? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kristen, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Kristen, seconded by Kevin, Theo?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well, thank you everyone, and again, Marissa, welcome and I look.
Yeah. Yeah, it's great to meet you, really glad you joined our town, so.
Thank you, I'm excited.